All right, everybody, it's seven o'clock. Welcome. We'll start our meeting as we always do with the Friends of Allegiance, and I think it's my turn to lead, so please join us.
The Friends of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Before we get into the next item on our agenda, just a couple of quick announcements. First of all, please come up and sit in the chairs. I apologize for the inconvenience, and I appreciate your guys' patience. The room usually has a lot more room in it, but you can see obviously what's going on. We're early voting started today, so we are doing what we have to do in Granby. This less than, well, about an hour ago, this room was set up for early voting, and it's got to be set up first thing in the morning. So we did the best we could to get some chairs out here and keep the voting equipment here, so please come up and take a chair. There's more chairs in the back if we need them, and we'll get them if you guys are going to sit, and not if you're just going to stand anyway. All right. All right, I just want to let everybody know that Kelly Rome is traveling for work and is probably not going to be able to join us tonight, so she is excused. And then I was going to ask the Board of Selectmen to consider a change to our agenda, which is to strike actually item 5(c), which is the Mountain Road acquisition. I would anticipate we would bring that back probably at our next meeting, but there are just a couple of issues we want to make sure we button completely down with respect to the existing power line there and the easement that may or may not exist for it. It's nothing that's going to change the deal, but because it's not urgent for us to act on this, I think it's prudent for us to just make sure we get the surveys almost complete and that we get the information we need on the power line. So you guys remember, there were some questions about that at our last meeting, so I think it's, you guys don't have any objection? Was there anybody in the audience who was here for that particular item? Somebody willing to make a motion to strike that? We'll bring it back at one of our two November meetings.
Move that we modify the agenda to remove item 5(c), the 229 Mountain Road acquisition. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, the next item on our agenda is approval of our public hearing minutes from our CCSWA meeting of October 7.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes of October 7.
Second.
Any questions, discussion, suggested revisions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, the next item is to approve the minutes from our regular Board of Selectmen meeting of October 7.
That being, I thought I just did the regular meeting. This is the hearing minutes?
No, we did the CC SWA first.
Yep, so now we're on the regular meeting minutes from our October 7th meeting.
Move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 7, and remember the pledge.
And what?
Remember the pledge of allegiance.
We did the pledge already. Where you been? Are you guys teasing me, or what?
No, no, we didn't. Second.
All right. Well, let's make sure we're all on the same page. We have a motion to the second to approve the minutes from our October 7th meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. The next item on our agenda is our standing item for appointments for those of you guys who have time on your hands and are interested in serving. We have some vacancies on our Conservation Commission and our Park and Rec Board. So if you're interested or know of anybody who might be interested, please have them reach out to us. As far as I know, there are no recommendations for tonight.
I have nothing.
We have no old business, so we'll go on to new business. The first item on our agenda is to issue a proclamation to the Granby Horse Council, and then to receive a presentation from the Horse Council. So who's going to accept the proclamation from you? Everybody in the room? So of all my duties, actually, if you guys haven't seen or heard me, this is the one I like the least, not issuing proclamations, but reading them. I'm not really good at reading. So I'm going to read the proclamation, and then it's signed by both myself and the town manager. We'll come down and present it to you. Surely you'll get a picture of us presenting it to you, and then we'll do whatever pictures you want. We'll have the rest of the Board of Selectmen come down and whoever you want in the picture. Is that good? All right, so the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Granby Horse Council was founded in 1979 by ten residents as a result of trail usage issues in McLean Game Refuge. And whereas the Granby Horse Council was incorporated by the State of Connecticut on February 4, 1980," I was still in high school if you care, "and held their first meeting one month later on March 12, 1980. Whereas the Horse Council has worked cooperatively with residents and the town government to create a horse-friendly community exhibited by its education in proper horse management, respect for personal property, and the promotion and support of horse activities in town. And whereas throughout its tenure, the Granby Horse Council has held activities to raise money for various charities, created a college scholarship for a local high school student, participated in parades and town celebrations, helped resolve any issues that might arise between neighbors and horses, and educated its members and the public on matters related to horses. And whereas the Granby Horse Council has been instrumental in the creation of Granby's reputation as a horse-friendly community, and now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen and the Granby Town Manager do hereby commend forty-five years of existence for the Granby Horse Council." Forty-five years, that's awesome. Hold your applause. In witness hereof, this is my favorite part when I get to read stuff like this, "I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the town of Granby to be affixed this twenty-first day of October 2024," and it's signed by me as our first selectman, and Mike Walsh is our town manager, but I know I speak on behalf of our entire board. Thank you very, very much for all that you do for our community.
We get that there's definitely some OGs in this group, that they were kind of the original, the Strains, Johnsons, Barbara Greenwood.
There is no way, I'm getting in the middle of thinking which one of you stood wrong.
Everybody, if you are here for the Granby Horse Council, please get in the picture.
We can probably pull the podium out of the elevator.
Take a little bit, Charlie, how about you get one, which is that we'll all step out, and then we get everybody, everybody on the corner can step out.
Center yourself a little more, so we guys can understand what's going on in the background. Everybody move over, take a step.
You can hold the horse down.
We can probably pull the podium out of the elevator.
Jesus, man.
I don't get to say hi, I can take that one.
Good to see you.
Hey, Morgan. Good to see you. Good to see you.
At the podium, please.
Honest, two seconds. I'm Billy McNeely, I'm the current president of the Granby Horse Council, and I just want to thank the town of Granby and the Board of Selectmen for recognizing the hard work that this wonderful group of people who have been functioning many years before I came along, and to past presidents, for allowing us to just be part of your community and to have horses surrounded by people who are interested and engaged and want to know more about us. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for all you're doing. All right, Crystal, you're going to do the presentation, so for those of you who are not familiar, I don't know, maybe six months or so ago, the Board sort of started a process where we're asking our community partners and to come to us on a regular basis and tell us, remind us first of all, you know, what your mission is, your core mission, and tell us about things you got done in the last year, things you see coming next year, and things you think you might need help with. So take it away. You've got to give them a name and a fake address for the record.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out for Granby Horse Council. It's kind of embarrassing that I'm up here doing the presentation, a newbie newbie for the Horse Council, so thank you. And any mistakes that I make in this presentation that you guys can correct, please let me know. I will fix them, and you can interrupt me. Okay. So I'm Crystal Fiorentino. My husband's Mark, but that's just a coincidence while I'm here. I'm actually a Granby Horse Council member, and I would like to thank the Board of Selectmen for inviting us here to hear about our organization. I'd also like to thank those in attendance here supporting the Granby Horse Council, especially Barbara Greenwood, whom I just met tonight, and she's actually the reason why I'm here, standing before you. This here is the parade team, they're all Granby Horse Council members. I've been a member of the council, not the parade team, that's way too scary for a nervous rider like me, but since we've been here, so about almost fifteen years, but I only recently became braver in group trail riding, and I was so enamored with this group that I joined the Board. It was this presentation that I learned how the Granby Horse Council came to be, and it's really fascinating, and I'm really excited to share its origins. Next slide. "On an evening in 1979, ten horse people got together. Is Lael Farm owner Barbara Greenwood, she gathered everybody in her living room. Along with the Greenwoods, there are some names you might recognize, the Boglies, DeAngeluses, Johnsons, Kaitens, and the Strains. At the time, a team from Yale University was doing an environmental study of McLean Game Refuge, and there were some problems surrounding trail usage. The leader of that Yale team encouraged Barbara to organize, and I quote, 'a responsible group of horse people that could come together and create a unified voice to represent and communicate horse-related interests.'" Thus began the Granby Horse Council. Some of those OGs from that original meeting are actually here. Next slide. "Granby Horse Council was incorporated by the State of Connecticut on February 4 in the first official, of 1980, and the first official meeting was held a month later on March 12. Minutes from that first meeting state that the purpose for the Granby Horse Council was so horse people and non-horse people alike can coexist in harmony, working together with the town government and each other, in order that we may continue to enjoy our horses. In order to do this, we must work to educate the people of Granby and proper horse management, be respectful to each other, other people's properties and their rights, so that they will in turn respect our rights as horse owners. Also, they wanted to help promote and support horse activities in Granby." Next slide. "A few years after the formation of Granby Horse Council, the town proposed a drastic revision of the zoning regulations, which would have zoned out many of the horses and other animals in Granby who were living on modest-sized parcels. The members of the Granby Horse Council did a town-wide distribution of flyers, warning the populace of impending changes. This grassroots effort of the Granby Horse Council resulted in a turnout of approximately five hundred very, and I'm told vocal, people at that next town planning and zoning meeting. Their collective voices were heard, and the Granby Horse Council became instrumental in writing the new zoning regulations which accommodated backyard horses. In addition, people with horse interests were eventually elected to the Planning and Zoning Board, giving representation to animal interest in our town." Next slide. I thought this was interesting, so I included it. "In 1992, a rider from the Hartford Current wrote an article entitled 'For the Horses and Horse Enthusiasts, Granby Offers a Home on the Range.' In this article, he wrote, 'In this little town of ninety-six hundred, there's no horse industry, there's no racetrack, or equestrian training center to entice the horsey crowd to settle here. Once a farming community, Granby is now an outlying countryfied suburb, yet it offers horse owners something they see disappearing in other towns across Connecticut, a zoning code that makes keeping a horse on your own property affordable and trouble-free. The regulations,' and this is a quote from the article, 'are a testament to the foresight of what may be Granby's most powerful single-interest group, the Granby Horse Council.'" Next slide. "The Granby Horse Council has evolved in these last four decades, and so is its mission. Our mission now states that our purpose is to promote the protection of rights of horses, other equines, and the horse people in the town of Granby, Connecticut, and other surrounding areas, the education of horse owners and the public, educational and charitable causes in the community relating to our mission, riding activities such as trail riding, parades, demonstrations, and also maintenance of local multi-use trails in town." Next slide. "It took several years bringing an idea into reality, but eventually in 1995, a riding ring was built at Holcombe Farm. In 2004, another exercise ring was built at Sammerbrook Park, I'm told before it was even a park. There was a great article in the Granby Drummer written by our own Joan Davis, who's here tonight, who's in that picture of the ribbon-cutting ceremony. She wrote of the dedication ceremony in Sammerbrook Park as well as all of the many, many people and organizations that had come together to make that a reality." Next slide. "I particularly liked the explanation of how the multi-use trails were started in Sammerbrook Park by a local Boy Scout group. In an effort to connect the trail to others in the area, a Mr. Peters flew a plane over the area to assist the trailblazers on foot and on horseback to cut the remaining trails through there." I thought this was an interesting picture, especially for the youth in this, this room, because you can't do panoramic view like we can do on phones. Somebody actually took two pictures, and you can see, taped them together, and took another picture, and put it up there. So I thought that was kind of, kind of a cool thing. So, next, next slide. "So since its inception, the Granby Horse Council's activities have included raising money for charities, educating members and the public on horse issues, funding college scholarships, riding in parades and town celebrations, helping resolve conflicts between neighbors and horses, and maintaining the multi-use trails within the community." So here in this slide, on the left and on the right are pictures of different trail cleanups around town, and the middle one is of an advertisement on the town green for a Share of the Road clinic and demonstration. Next slide. "We also participate annually in Open Farm Day. We set up at Angel Horses, a nonprofit animal sanctuary in town. We sponsored this year a mounted shooting demonstration at Holcombe Hoedown, which was really cool if anybody attended. And the last picture is of Bushy Hill Orchard, where they put up a hitching post so that we could stop for ice cream after trail riding there." Next slide. Here we have two events that are my own personal favorites. There's an animal desensitization training, that's the one in the middle, and also the one on the left. Kizzy, my Icelandic, and I, we've done this twice, it's actually what's helped me become part of this Granby Horse Council. And then also, this is part of the poker ride, really fun, small brag, Kizzy and I won it last year, with Bobby and his mule. Next slide. "So, membership matters. If you enjoy seeing horses in your town, please support us, join us. Membership is open to all for the Granby Horse Council, and owning horses is not a requirement, but loving them is a requirement. We have a newsletter, we host trail rides, and we help foster community connections with locals who love equines." Next slide. "So when Mark spoke with us about celebrating the forty-five-year anniversary, he asked that we make a presentation about our mission, about our accomplishments and our commitment, but he asked us to bring an ask to the town, and how the town could actually support us on our mission, and we have two. And this slide represents them. The first, more signage, especially near trailheads to create awareness, increase safety for both our horses and the mounted and unmounted townspeople in our town. Rumor has it that there used to be over forty signs in the area, and there's now only ten. The second ask up here is parking at Holcombe Farm. This is a picture of the old parking area before the new building was built, you might recognize it, and you can notice how flat it is and how easy it is to pull in and to pull out for us trailer people, which is very nerve-wracking as it is. We now have to park on the south of the main buildings, which is a good location, but it's not level and the dirt is really soft, and so we've gotten stuck there, many of us have gotten stuck. So besides the great stress that happens to the driver and to the horses when you get stuck, it has the potential to cause the damage to the vehicle, and of course, the land that's there at Holcombe Farm. So a level, compacted area would alleviate this. It's a really great place for us to pull in, to pull out, it's just not flat and compacted." Last slide. "We appreciate the town of Granby and its Board of Selectmen acknowledging the Granby Horse Council and its dedication to our town and our initiatives in keeping our town horse-friendly. If anyone would like more information on our mission, our membership, our events, you can find us online at this website or on Facebook. Thank you. Any questions?
Ben, we'll start down on your end.
No questions? I just want to say thank you. I went to the hoedown, and I saw the shooting demonstration.
It was cool, right?
Very cool.
I don't have any questions, but thank you for all you do at the Granby Horse Council, it's really amazing. Well, thank you. They all do best.
Great presentation, thank you.
Thanks.
No questions.
I don't see any questions. Thank you, Crystal, thank you, everybody. I appreciate the presentation, because there's the kind of obvious things the Horse Council does, but there were some things in there that I knew about that maybe the public didn't about, for example, about you're working with other organizations on trail maintenance and making sure that we're all working together, and keeping the trails open, and keeping them operating away where we minimize conflicts between other trail users, so thank you for doing that. I have two questions. One, do you guys know precisely where you want the Share of the Road signs? Have you done, have you done that level of?
We have not, but we certainly can get that to you in a timely period. I would need to get some feedback from the group.
Do you know, Mike, do we have those in inventory?
Well, my question was exactly Mark's. Where were the thirty signs that have disappeared? We can have those locations. I'm not aware that we have them in inventory, but we can find the money to procure them, and we'll start erecting them once we get locations.
That'd be great, and I had an example of two different types of signs. I think, you know, the one of just the horse person, the person on the horse is really good to create awareness that there's horseback riding around here, but the pass wide and slow that you don't see very often, I think is really helpful, because I believe, I refuse to believe people are just mean. I think it's more about educating the ignorant drivers who drive so fast and so close to the horses. So I think having those sorts of signs are really important, too, because I think it reminds them, they're animals, like they could do something crazy. And so I think having those sorts of signs that are less popular, I think are really important, especially where we are accessing areas for trails. So I will get that information to you, and hopefully we can work together and get some more signage up.
Sure. So, yeah, that, to me, that's kind of critical, and I think we obviously need to focus on where there are public access to the trails. And then my second question was with respect to the parking lot. Have you guys talked to the friends of Holcombe Farm at all? Have you, about?
We have not, that's not, no, we have not. So I'm sure that the Board can, we can do that. Honestly, I wouldn't have even known where to start. So the first was coming here and just acknowledging that we do have that ask, and what we don't know next steps.
Yeah, unless somebody disagrees, I personally think that's a good next step on that part, because they're obviously helping us manage Holcombe Farm and making sure what you need doesn't conflict with what they're doing, or Joe's farming operations and those kind of things. You guys talking together and making a, potentially making a joint recommendation probably is valuable.
Okay. Perfect.
That's all I have.
No questions, just thank you, Crystal, that was a very interesting presentation.
Thanks for listening.
No questions from me either, thank you.
Great.
Scott, you got anything?
Got nothing for you.
Good? Okay. Thanks for listening, and thanks for coming, supporting the council.
Great work, everybody, thank you very much. Now you will hurt my feelings a little bit if you all move out and don't listen to the rest of the agenda, but if you really do have other things to do, you want me to take a thirty-second break so you guys can go? Or you want to stay?
Stay.
All right, we're going to take, take a thirty-second break, so if you want to leave, go ahead, if not, you're welcome to stay. All right, we're going to get back to order. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is 87 Simsbury Road acquisition. Board members, you're familiar with this. We've seen it a bunch of times, including at our last meeting. Mike's done a detailed memo. All of the agreements that are referenced are part of our backup. Let's start with any questions from the board. Anybody have any questions or issues based on what we heard or your reading of the documents? Am I that way?
No, I reviewed them and I didn't come up with any questions.
Man, I think the biggest concern was the environmental issues. And there were a couple of comments that were made in the Halloran Sage letter regarding the fact that they were reviewing a draft of the Phase One as opposed to a final Phase One. Do you know if there was any difference between the draft that they reviewed and the final draft?
Yes, the final draft was considerably longer. The date of the last meeting was the 7th, if I'm not mistaken. The early morning of the 8th, we received the full final Phase One report from GeoQuest. And that was important for Rich Roberts, our attorney, because there are certain environmental defenses that a municipality can have if we rely on that report. So that report had to be, number one, updated. It had to be within 30, within 90 days, I believe, was the number of when we were going to consummate this transaction. And when it was in draft form, my recollection was it was like 68 pages. We were considerably longer than that. And GeoQuest went back, added the language that Rich Roberts wanted to see in it so that all defenses related to environmental liabilities were available to the town should they come up. In the grand scheme of things, what we know is because this property has been amongst us, is that yes, there may have been farming, yes, there may have been tobacco use, you know, prior to 1970. We can see where it may have occurred, but it's no different than the acreage that we took with Holcombe Farm. So the update has happened. It is on our website if anyone wants to review it. And there were no changes other than the fact that certain language was added to make ourselves available to those defenses. And our corporation counsel, Rich Roberts, is happy with it moving forward.
Thank you.
I'm all set.
Okay.
No, nothing for me.
You guys? Okay. Go ahead, Ben.
Well, I guess I'll just ask this is, should, if the GeoQuest results come in with more on the negative side that there are pesticides or there are some negative things that you wouldn't want to see on farmland, would that change the way we should look at the building? Should that change the way we look at an investment into utilizing the building and structure?
So I think any municipality, when they exist or when they will exist in the chain of custody for a property, should take great care and caution. One, I think the liability is the same as what we accepted as a community when we accepted the rest of Holcombe Farm. There's nothing identified in the Phase One, now that it's been finalized, that would give us rise for concern. And finally, I approach it somewhat from a pragmatic point of view. Who best to clean up a pesticide residue if it was used on tobacco, depending on the future use, than the town? We would have available brownfield grants and so forth. I do not believe, from what I've seen, from what I've read in the Phase One, that any environmental cleanup is of concern or of necessary that it be cleaned up. But again, should we find ourselves in a position where there was something, we have a number of defenses available to us, so I don't feel uncomfortable recommending that the transaction should proceed.
It's a good question, though, Ben. If the environmental report had alluded to anything more significant than usual pesticide use that you would see on any farmland, then yeah, we would have to look at the transaction differently, which is why we went through this process to have our attorney say, you need to tell us that the risk that we're taking is acceptable and that, as Peggy pointed out, that our attorney recommended very specific changes to the GeoQuest report, which they made, and then our attorney has reviewed it again and said those, he's recommending that we move forward. That's what we want to do. So, all right. I only have just one quick comment. So, Mike, on the, when you get ready, assuming we approve it, on the conveyance agreement, the first page just references a Schedule A being attached, which isn't actually attached, so I'll just have to make, it's just a legal description of a property.
Yep.
So just make sure that that's attached when we go forward. If there are any other further questions, there are, remember, there are three agreements, so there are three proposed motions in our backup. If you are so inclined, I think we should vote on them separately.
Okay, I'll start off with the first one. I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the conveyance agreement between the town of Granby, the Hartford Foundation Republic Giving, and the Decamay Asset Trust for the acquisition of 87 Simsbury Road for no monetary consideration and direct Town Manager Mike Walsh to execute all documents necessary to facilitate the acquisition.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right.
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen approve the agreement with the Granby Land Trust, whereby the Granby Land Trust does hereby pledge up to $100,000 of funding for the demolition of the church building and the restoration of the land at 87 Simsbury Road, and direct the Town Manager Mike Walsh to execute all documents necessary to execute the agreement.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, one more motion.
And I will move that the Board of Selectmen approve the use and occupancy agreement between the town of Granby and Holcombe Farm Incorporated for the maintenance of the property and buildings located at 87 Simsbury Road and direct Town Manager Mike Walsh to execute all documents necessary to execute the agreement.
Second the motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So, for those of you that were following that and/or who are related to it, thank you again. Another great, great example of some very good work for the community that none of those three partners could do on their own, but we, things we can accomplish working together. So thank you for the time and energy that we've put into it and now we've got a lot more work to do. So, all right. We struck Item 5C, so we will move on to Item 5D, which is American Rescue Plan Act allocation requests. There are three. So, Mike, why don't you take it from here?
Sure. Similar to the reallocation of existing monies, which are part of the $1.6 million most recent American Rescue Plan Act allocation, we are seeking a reallocation of monies totaling $85,000 for three specific things. Up to $25,000 for a Parks and Recreation Board study. As you know, we have recent noise complaints from abutting property owners related to the playing of pickleball at the tennis courts at Salmon Brook Park. On September 3rd, approximately 40 people joined in the discussion. And at a subsequent Parks and Recreation Board meeting, they talked about solutions. This, working in partnership with the Town Manager's Office, voted to engage an outside firm for the purpose of creating a master plan to prioritize any future investment in the parks. A request for proposal is available and an allocation of $25,000 will allow us to identify a vendor to create a planning vision for the parks for 2030, 2040, and 2050. Essentially, they would focus on Salmon Brook Park and Aaron's Park. We would identify what fields are overused, underutilized, what things we may want to offer, what things we no longer should offer. There would be input from the community in terms of surveys and sampling. We would have a final report. We want to engage them by the end of the year. And as we approach the spring, we will have an understanding as to what best way to approach Salmon Brook Park, in particular, the pickleball noise complaints. And I think doing that with a outside party who is independent is perhaps the best way to get at the underlying overuse and underuse of the field. And again, it's more of a planning document than it is a specific request for a solution, but it'll allow us to make some database decisions the next time we invest in Salmon Brook Park. If you recall, back in March as part of the budget, there was upwards of $700,000 put in for a new playscape there. We took a step back because there was just too many moving parts and we subsequently found about $20,000 of repairs that makes sense, but not a complete renovation. So this is an opportunity, again, to have an independent set of eyes and look at this. The second item is a Public Works tow behind trailer. About two months ago, our Public Works staff was using a front-end loader and a chain to lift a large concrete basin. The chain broke. Fortunately, no one was hurt, except the drainage basin fell onto the trailer, basically crushing the suspension. Kerma, our insurer, has paid us about $8,100 for the loss of the trailer. And we're currently making a trailer, or Simsbury's making a trailer available to us, but that is only a short-term solution. This was a replacement on the 10-year capital plan, albeit a formal a few years away. So this $40,000 allows us to check off something that is on the capital list and something that we need in the midterm. In the package, there's a picture of what the trailer looks like. And then finally, similarly, a grass flail attachment. We currently no longer have the ability to fix the flail that we have as an attachment. We have many miles of roads that we use and on the side is roadside grass, brush, and various vegetation. This is a piece of equipment that hydraulically goes over into the roadside area and cuts the various vegetation so that you have better clearance and better line of views for safety reasons. A new flail attachment is $20,000. It is also on the 10-year capital improvement plan, albeit several years away, and we're no longer able to adequately service the existing one we have. So there's a picture of the flail mower in your package. So, Mr. Chairman, those are the three items we would like reprogrammed. It's not new spending, it's simply a reallocation of existing ARPA spending.
And just to confirm for the record, we're not, this doesn't take many away from any of the other projects that we identified here, or how you set it up?
No, if you recall, we left $201,000 in roads, not to do more roads, but to simply, if that money wasn't spent, we didn't want to send it back to the government. We were going to take the roads we already currently paid for and simply make a reallocation. This reduces that money and puts it toward, instead of a general road swap, it simply allows us to do some things that we didn't see as being necessary at the time we put the allocation in front of you in August. But now they've reached a priority where it makes some sense to use ARPA funds instead of digging deeper into the existing budget.
Any questions or concerns? No. I just, I have just a quick note. So the memo on, in the Parks and Rec study, makes a reference to the meeting minutes being attached. My version didn't have the meeting minutes?
Mine did not either, but it is the, I believe, the September 3rd were the original minutes where they discussed it, and then they had a special meeting, which was the next meeting after September 3rd.
My only request is if we just had Kathy add the minutes to the website so they're easy to find since we referenced them.
I'll do.
That'd be cool. All right. If there are any other further questions or concerns, there's a proposed motion in the backup.
I'll make a motion to approve the addition of the park study, tow behind trailer, and the flail mower attachment as Projects 2024-022 through 2024-024 in the amount of $85,000 to the existing Phase II ARPA project list, and direct the Town Manager to obligate funding by December 31st, 2024, in order to complete all spending by December 31st, 2026.
Second the motion.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you, Mike. All right, next item on our agenda is the town of Granby, meeting room, communication and waiver policy adoption. Before you get into this, Mike, I just want to take a second to thank Mike and thank our department heads who worked on this and to our boards and commissions that have provided input so far and will continue to provide input. For as long as I've been talking to folks in the public, citizens have, and constituents have asked us to look at our use policy for the buildings and have expressed a concern that a number of our community partners get priced out and have a hard time using the space because of the amount we charged. And so, we've been talking about updating our policy and providing a potential waiver process for those, just by way of example, the Horse Council who do a certain level of work for our community to provide them some limited opportunities to use the space free of charge. So, this is something that I've been asking for, for some time, and I'm grateful that you guys have, I see it like as any other policy, it's not going to be perfect, and so I think this is a great starting point where you have us here now and probably something we should be always looking at and we may need to adjust. But with that introduction, take it away.
I concur with everything you said. This is a start and will be refined over time. There are two types of rooms that the town of Granby has. We have them in four locations. We have some small rooms at the library. One can accommodate up to 12 people, one up to four. You simply need to go online and reserve that. There are several rooms at the senior center. There are two activity rooms, which you may reserve, and then there's the large community room, which you may rent, or currently, you may rent. There's space at the police station, although we hold that near and dear to our hearts because all our equipment that's Emergency Operations Center is there. And then finally, here in Town Hall, we have this room plus the manager's town conference room that we'll make available to the public. This got everybody in the same room and said, how do we make our rooms more available to the town of Granby residents? So, the activity rooms and the rooms that you can reserve are pretty easy. You just need to go online for the library and we'll be adding the senior center to those. However, we had no mechanism that was Board of Selectmen approved that allowed us to take a hard look at the community room at the senior center, the Salmon Brook Park gathering room, the Holcombe Farm North Barn, and the Holcombe Farm Workshop. Those are rooms that cost something to reserve. So what we put together, again, happy to revise it as we move forward, is a rental policy that considers a waiver for certain nonprofits that are based in Granby, whose mission is to invest, promote, and sustain things that benefit Granby, not to exceed one rental waiver per month, subject to room availability, not to exceed $840 a year. And the $840 is not, it's simply math. If you take the community room at the senior center, which rents for $70 an hour, and if you want to use that 12 times, that's $840. Additionally, for something like the Granby Land Trust, you can use the North Barn one time a year because that's a $700 rental. So I think it balances the town's ability to collect revenue, to offset taxes based on usage, but at the same time represents something or reflects something that is good for the community. In this particular case, I spoke with representatives of 4H. This seemed to work for them, and I spoke to representatives from the Granby Land Trust. It works for them. Again, it will nick the revenue we take in as part of the budget, but given their missions that overlap with our missions of delivering community service, the limited waiver policy makes good sense to me.
Board members? Any questions, concerns?
No, I think it makes a lot of sense.
You think it makes enough sense to make a motion?
I suppose.
That was a joke. That was a joke.
All right. So I move that the board approve a room rental waiver policy administered by the town manager, subject to the following conditions: for Granby-based nonprofits with predominantly Granby-based membership, subject to room availability, not to exceed one rental waiver per month, whereby such waiver is in the best interest of the Town of Granby, and whereby the cumulative annual fee waiver per organization does not exceed $840.
Second motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Thank you, Mike. Next item on the agenda, Town of Granby's Personnel Rules Revised in October of this year. Again, I'm just going to very brief. This is one of the things that has been on our list for quite some time. I think it's been 20 years, 22 years since we officially revised our personnel rules. They were way out of date. But it's a huge undertaking. I know because I started it before we had Mike involved. A huge undertaking to get them both up to date and then to revise the policies in a way that kind of makes sense for everybody. So a lot of people put a lot of work into this, and I'm grateful that we're here today with it. So why don't you?
I have to echo some of those same comments. This was a lot of work. It started off, as you mentioned, Mark took the bull by the horns. He enlisted HR Director Krista Schaefer's help, Finance Director Kimmy Cheng, Betsy Mazada, and most recently Peggy. Thank you for your review. And then Mark did a final review. This is a living, breathing document. I have no doubt that once we put it into effect tomorrow, or after the appropriate period of time, if it passes tonight, it'll, there'll be certain sections that won't exactly line up. I anticipate this will be amended about annually in conjunction with the budget process. Just some notable additions. The rules now dovetail with existing union contracts, so rules and benefits have parity. Language was added for the Family Medical Leave Act. An annual process was created aligning the budget to review non-union salaries. That's important for competitiveness. This now, for the first time, aligns with the Fair Labor Standards Act. A definition, or defined application, interview, promotion, and applicant selection process was created. An alignment of personnel policies with the town's financial systems has occurred. Thank you, Kimmy Cheng, on that one. And then finally, a host of policies are embodied in this document, like the ethics policy, substance abuse, and workplace violence, among other things. So again, thank you to Mark. Thank you to Peggy, HR Director Krista, Finance Director Kimmy, Betsy. We were a working team. We took this in two-hour bites over the course of about four months. Every week, we worked at this and moved it a little bit forward. This is a marked difference from what was in place and now aligns with the systems that we have in place that HR Krista will administer. And again, we've got some alignment with other contracts. So I feel pretty good about where this is, but it will need to be maintained on an annual basis unless it fall into disrepair.
Board members?
I think it's good that a policy of this nature is updated after a 22-year hiatus, you said. And if we had updated our systems, I think that we need to update this to reflect them.
We definitely don't want it to fall into a 22-year state of disrepair. I can probably see that that would be a mistake.
This was a huge undertaking, and I was just reviewing the final product and comparing it to what we started with. And there was a lot of work that went into this. And I think the final result is a good result.
All right. Good.
Nothing for me. Thank you, everyone who worked on it.
All right. Are you comfortable making a motion to adopt him?
Sure. I move that the Board of Selectmen do hereby accept and approve the October 2024 Personnel Rules as amended and presented by the town manager based on his October 15, 2024 memo to the board.
Second motion.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Good work, everybody. Next item on the agenda is the Town Manager Project Update and September Budget and ARPA Reports. Before you get started, Mike, a lot of you guys are new. I don't normally see you. I want to give you a pitch. We spent a lot of time and effort over the last few years improving and increasing the information that we put out to the public so you can stay informed in what we're doing. And Mike's reports are a very good example of that. Please take a few minutes. Go online. They're easy to find. If you go under Agenda Minutes, they're very, very detailed, list of everything that we're doing. This meeting in particular, every other meeting besides a written description of what we're doing, we get a financial report of where we are in the budget, where we are in our ARPA projects. We've invested a lot of time and energy getting that information available to you. So please take a look at it. There's a lot of information in there that can help you stay informed.
Again, for the public, I produced two reports, one for the first Board of Selectmen's meeting. That has to do with departmental reports. I consolidate those that come from the Police Department, that come from Social Services, that come from the Public Works Department. And that gives you insight into what your budget money is being done with at a department level. The second report, which is today's report, is I give an update on important projects. I'm a personal believer that the operations are fine, but it's the projects that the residents see, pay attention to, and understand, again, where their investment is going into the community. Just a few highlights from the October 21 project update. The first one is the radio communications project. While we tabled the acquisition of the mountain road site, there was a picture attached to the town manager's report of the utility vehicle that is now in place and with the Lost Acres Fire Department. We are shifting gears. We're working on compiling two term sheets that we will eventually bring before the Board of Selectmen on the Freshies property. One will be for lease, one will be for sale. I will let a little bit of the air out of the bubble and say there's a considerable amount of work that's required of that building, from a new roof to a leaking foundation to mechanicals. Personally, it doesn't make sense for me for the town to hold on to that building as an empty shell. We should reinvest in it. I hope to do that through the agreement if we're able to get the developer or the contractor who's going to recite there in agreement, and then the board is in agreement. So that'll be coming soon. The construction of the Salmon Brook Park walking trail with pictures attached is included with this report. And the basketball court renovation is near final with just the striping, if it hasn't already occurred, to occur shortly. Kimmy Kudos draft audit is set to be reviewed by the Board of Finance at the Monday meeting one week from today. We have an unqualified opinion, so that's a great thing. Working with the park board to compile an RFP, seeking a master park plan, you tonight put the money in place to get that done. We started today. We reviewed, and we received and reviewed four submissions for the Kearns Senior Housing Property. We have two members of the Commission on Aging sitting with us. We had informal workshops with one of the submitters. Over the next two or so weeks, we'll have an informal workshop with the remaining three. We'll then synthesize our questions and invite everybody back for a formal interview with the idea of breaking off with one of the four submitters and start to conceptualize what's possible at Kearns. Working with tie and bond, addressing outdated sewer policies, flow metrics, and pump station planning. We've selected a contractor to complete the ARPA-based library renovation. We had budgeted about 180. That's coming in just under 100. And finally, on November 18th, for anybody that's a veteran of the Vietnam-era clash, the Lieutenant Governor will be here in Granby at the high school. We've sent out, thanks to Scott, personalized letters inviting anybody that's a veteran of that era to come forward and receive a citation from the Lieutenant Governor, and that's at 5 o'clock on November 18th. Last couple of things before I turn it back to you is a shout out to Paul Willis, Laura Wolf, and Scott. Early voting has started. And on October 9th, I sat in on a conference call statewide that included emergency operations from the state, the state's attorney general, the state police, something called CTEC, which is the Connecticut, basically, Information Technology Center, the Department of Energy, Emergency Services and Public Protection, the Secretary of State, the FBI, Homeland Security, the Police Chiefs Association, the Fire Chiefs Association, and nationwide cybersecurity partners. The point of the call was to ensure that the upcoming election is safe for all those who wish to cast a vote. We live in a very dynamic time, and I just want to shout out to the people who run the elections to thank you for that and reaffirm for the public that all eyes are on keeping a safe and accurate election count here in Granby. And those organizations, upwards of a dozen, are lending their help across the state to make sure that that happens safely. That's it for me.
You want to go into the financial stuff?
Oh, also included in the package, and I think Kimmy, I see her online if she wants to chime in. There are September 2024 budget operation highlights. There's, at this early point, we do give you a couple of insights into the Public Works Department over time and the Police Department over time. Both are up a little over last year. And then we also provide you with ARPA Phase 1 and Phase 2 spending. And I don't see any real problem getting the 2-point, I'm sorry, the $3.6 million of Total American Rescue Plan Act money received from the federal government obligated by December 31st. So we're well on our way to that. And if Kimmy is on the line and wants to add anything, I didn't invite her now.
I have nothing to ask, but I will take questions.
Any questions for Kimmy?
No.
Any questions for Mike? All right. We'll move on. Next item on the agenda is the First Selectman Report. I do have a few things. The first thing is I'm just, I want to follow up on what Michael's talking about on voting. Ask everybody here in this room, everybody watching, everybody who will watch later to share this information and pitch with your neighbors. We are anticipating a 92% turnout in Granby, which is good. Doesn't matter where you are at on the issues or who you support or don't. That's very, very good. We have never had a problem in Granby with safety, with disrespect, or frustration, or accuracy. And I want to keep that streak 100% alive. So please ask everybody to be patient. Early voting runs from now until November 3rd.
The 3rd.
November 3rd. So come down and vote early if you want to, but do expect lines, either here at early voting or on voting day. And please, if you forget everything else I just said, remember this. The people who are working here during early voting and who will work on Election Day are your neighbors. They're residents of Granby who are volunteers. The vast majority of them will work anywhere from 12 to 18-hour days, and they don't get paid at all. So please be patient with them. Be friendly and be patient with your neighbors. Couple other quick things. I attended the Holcomb Farm Harvest Dinner this weekend, which is back on the schedule after a couple-year hiatus. It's the main fundraiser, as you guys know, for the Fresh Access Program. I want to do a shout out to the members of the Holcomb Farm Board. They did a tremendous job. It was a great dinner, very entertaining. And I think they raised a lot of money for Fresh Access. So thank you to them for putting it on and for those who were able to attend. And I also just want to give a quick shout out to our team. I don't know, I don't remember seeing any of you there, but yesterday we did the trunk or treat event here at Town Hall. It's usually at Salmon Brook Park, but this year we did it at Town Hall to avoid any potential conflicts with the construction that's going on at Salmon Brook Park. It was packed. We think, we were predicting something like 200 to 300 kids. I wouldn't be surprised if there weren't three times that many kids here. And a lot of our community groups and partners had trunks set up, our fire department, our police department, our ambulance association, our school board, our town hall team had, we're all dressed up in costume and had, so thank you to Mike and Betsy and Amanda, Kathy, and Elise, and if there's anybody else I missed from Town Hall. Were not required to, but spent three or four hours of their Sunday down here entertaining kids and passing out candy. So it was a great event. Thank you for that. I think that's all I have. We'll move into Selectmen Reports. We'll start with Mark. You got anything?
No, I'll just echo. The early voting has started today in this room, the Town Hall Meeting Room. It's every day from now up until Election Day. And then Election Day itself will be at the school, the high school, at the community gym. So take an opportunity to vote and support your candidates.
Some of you may know that the Senior Center works with a Colette Travel to sponsor these international trips, and the Senior Center, the town, gets a percentage of the cost of the trip. So they make a little bit of money off of these. I just returned from the Spain-Portugal trip. And it's really, if you like to travel, and you like to travel, especially internationally, they're great trips. Everything's so well organized. It was a lot of fun. There was a group of 12 from the Granby group that went. And they're great trips.
Nothing for me.
Say, Neil?
At the high school, we have quite a few things going on. This past weekend, we had our homecoming dance, which a lot of people showed up. It was a great turnout. And this Wednesday, we have a few things upcoming. We have our grades nine through 11 that will be taking the PSAT. And we also have, in the evening, our NHS induction ceremony for the newly chosen members. Next week, we have our DECA Fall Leadership Conference on Monday, where we will be traveling to the aqua turf and get to learn about social media and business. And next Thursday, we have Aerospace and Engineering Field Trip, which is in Hartford. And then our first quarter ends on the 29th. So closing up our first quarter of the school year already.
Amazing how fast it goes. Any questions for Zainab? Ben?
All right. So real quick, adding on to that. So while all the underclassmen are taking the practice SAT, I will be taking the Apple test with a lot of other seniors, which is basically the test for bilingual, being bilingual. So anyone who's taken a language for as many years as they wanted to during high school has the option of taking a Connecticut test to get the seal of being bilingual. Also, the other thing is that sports, on the sports field, we just want to send a massive congratulations to the field hockey team, as they had just wrapped up a winning season in the NCCC. So they have already won and gotten a banner for winning the NCCC, which is extremely exciting. And then all the other teams all across the board are doing great. Boys soccer, we just beat East Hampton, the number-one team in the state last week. We are fifth in the state. Volleyball is third in the state. Girls soccer is eighth in the state, and field hockey is sixth. So as the states is coming up, the state tournament, everyone's really excited about trying to go for a state championship. And I think all the teams are very excited and in a very good position this year.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Then we will move on to the public session portion of our agenda. For those of you who didn't want to speak tonight, let me just kind of remind everybody of the rules that we follow during public session. of the rules that we follow during public session. We ask, first of all, give your name and address for the record. We'll limit your comments to five minutes. We will set a timer, because what we don't want to be distracted by watching the timer to see how, because there'll be an alarm, okay? Because we don't want to be distracted seeing how much time you have left. When the alarm goes off, just, you know, as a courtesy, I'll say, wrap it up. We rarely find anybody who has anything to say that lasts longer than five minutes. So I think that should be plenty. We can't and won't take action on anything that you raised tonight. If you have questions for us, what I do is I write down all the questions, and then when we're done with the entire public session, when everybody's had a chance to speak, I just make a personal judgment. If you asked a question that I feel comfortable answering, because we have, we know the answer, then I'll do that tonight. If not, we will work on getting answers back at a future meeting. If, I suspect a number of you are here just talked about the same topic, we do ask you to just, it's okay just to say me too. So please, we, in fact, we do have a meeting scheduled that was supposed to start at 8 o'clock on a, we're going to go as long as you need to, but work with us. If you agree with what your neighbor said, it's fine, you just come up and get your name on the record and say, I agree. So we try not to duplicate people's comments. All right, who wants to go first? Come on up. Well, wait a minute, wait, wait. No, I called on her first. You come up. You have to come to the podium, though. No, you can come.
You can go first.
No. No, it don't work that way. I get to say who goes first, and you raised your hand, so you get to go first. Mike, you can give her six minutes. Come on up.
She looks like she only wants two.
Hello, my name is Leila Johnston. I live at 42 Barn Door Hills Road, across the creek from 16 Barn Door Hills Road, which a farmer rented, and he is spraying it with harmful chemicals. The chemicals kill bees and butterflies. Toxic spray will also get on plants and deers that black bears eat. Toxic spray will also get on plants that deers and black bears eat. Most importantly, these chemicals are dangerous for human beings, because they will get into our water supply, which is dangerous for humans to drink. Plus, the chemicals will get into the water my mom uses to water our garden. The chemicals will get onto the flowers, vegetables, and fruits that we grow and eat. Also, the chemicals will get carried by the wind directly into my backyard, and my brother Leo and I will breathe them in when we play outside. Last May, my brother and I played in the creek during summer. It's as the area the farmer sprays, so if we play in the creek, the chemicals will get on our bodies. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Great job. Don't go anywhere. Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you very much. Okay.
I don't have to follow that.
Great job. All right. My name is Stephanie Harper. I am at 48 Barn Door Hills Road. I'm also here to talk about the property at 16 Barn Door Hills. That is about 16 acres or so of cultivated farmland that the town is leasing to a farmer who's on first year of a five-year lease. And my property directly abuts most of the land there. There's a couple of other ones, but I have one full side. And this year's been a bit of a challenge for us with this new farmer. It started off with finding some cardboard that was thrown off into the woods right along the property line. I want to thank Mike for being very helpful, jumping right on that very quickly. And throughout the year, we found a lot of garbage, both on the town property and on my property, and we did have an issue where on more than one occasion, the workers were not provided proper sanitary facilities. And unfortunately, I did have to call and get some soiled toilet paper removed from my field, which is also part of the trail network that was spoken about earlier by the Horse Council. This is all area that's open for the public to recreate on and was not in sanitary condition. This is both unfair to those workers and to the residents that are using this trail and the public. We also learned that the crops were being sprayed with herbicides, and the packaging requires at least a 300-foot buffer between where it's been sprayed and desirable plants, which unfortunately includes my hayfield. I'm within that 300 feet. My house is also right at the edge, as well as several of my neighbors' houses. And it requires a 1,200-foot buffer between what's sprayed and any homes. That includes 35 properties. And if you use the DEP guidelines and look at not just the crops that were sprayed, but the property line that was sprayed, that's even more than 35 properties in Granby, both on Route 20 as well as on Barn Door Hills Road. I want to see us set ourselves up for success next year, since this is a five-year lease for this farmer, and find a way to get both our concerns as the public and as abutters, as well as make sure that we're setting this farmer up for success. If we're spraying chemicals that can't be used, we need to work with him to figure out what can he do. And I have concerns that there are other properties around town that are being leased to farmers, and we're not sure what is being sprayed on those either. We just happen to have involved people that were on the property and realized what was happening at this location. There might be other locations. So I would like to see any property that's leased for farming from the town get a list before things are applied. That way, we're able to address, is this a good area to apply that, and make sure that we're not having to do all this after the fact. Thank you.
Hang on, Stephanie, don't go anywhere. I just want to make sure before you leave, if anybody has questions, we ask you.
Any questions?
Any questions?
No.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to say me too.
I will make you come to the podium, though, and say me. Actually, no, I won't. I got it, me too. So before you go, is there anybody in the room who wants to talk about a subject other than this? Okay, go ahead.
Hi. Lee Shaw, number one Barn Door Hills Road. And I want to open by thanking you. Mike, you were wonderful in working with us with all the difficulties that came up this year. It's been a very difficult situation with that property. It's kind of ironic that you talked about the Horse Council being there for so many years and about the work the Horse Council has done to maintain trails in that area. That property is a really particularly important one for us, because we ride through there to get to Salmon Brook Park, and we ride through there to get to McLean Game Refuge. It's bordered by three different privately owned properties, one of which is Stephanie's, another which is the former Herdendorf's property, which the new owners that have it now are giving us permission to ride through and giving people permission to hike through, and they abut McLean. And then the property on the other side, that's been owned by the same family for many years, also allows riders. So this is a very important area for us. And when we did find out that the farmer had sprayed this chemical inappropriately, we were very concerned, because there were specific things about the chemical that said that people should not be in the area of that chemical for 12 hours after spraying, and we, nobody knows when he sprayed it. And my concern is if we're going to continue to let farmers in that particular area spray chemicals, when do we know he sprayed it? Are we going to be riding through there? Are people going to be hiking through there? Steph has a trail camera, and she can see who goes in and out of her field. She's looked at that and reviewed what's on it, and she estimates she gets enough two or three people a day going through her property. So if you're talking about how many people is that a month, and extrapolate that over the year, I mean, between riders and walkers, there's a lot of people that are down there. A lot of people are utilizing this. It's so local to McLean's and Salmon Brook Park that there's people, you know, walking and riding on it all the time, and it really doesn't seem to make sense to have somebody spraying chemicals on there, and we don't know about it. And it's kind of ironic that you were talking previously about the Simsbury Road property and looking at, you know, is there pesticide residue in there? You know, this is town land, and we really wondered, do we want somebody growing tobacco on this? Because that's what he sprayed that Clomazone on. It was a tobacco crop, and we all know how dirty tobacco is concerning herbicides and pesticides. The other problem is this is on a flood plain. All of that area, except for that upper field, is on a flood plain. And we know that it floods. I've lived here and ridden on that property for 20 years now. I've seen plenty of floods on that property where it comes right up, the brook comes right over a good half of those fields. And it sends all of the debris from the woods into the field. The farmers have to clear that off the field in order to plant it. So when this is happening, all of that topsoil with the pesticide in it is going to get washed into the brook. And this situation with the spraying that he did inappropriately went over the brook, because we found bleached vegetation on both sides of the brook from his spraying, where his overspray went. And it went over the brook, it obviously had to settle on the brook. The paperwork from that company said that it's dangerous to invertebrates, and they also said it was dangerous to pollinators. People in this town, a lot of little kids go play in Salmon Brook down at Salmon Brook Park. So they're playing in water that possibly flowed through this area where we're letting farmers put pesticides and herbicides, and the kids are playing in that water. I let my grandchildren go down there and play in that water, and now that we've got somebody who's doing this, I can't let them do that anymore. So I think this is really something that we need to look at. I know that in recent years, I don't believe we spray chemicals at Salmon Brook Park anymore. We don't spray chemicals at Holcomb Farm. We grow vegetables there without them. Other farmers in town grow vegetables without chemicals. So I think we need to look closer at what's going on with this particular piece of property, considering that it's really kind of a special case. It's not somebody's leased land of a private owner where nobody's walking on it. There are people on it all the time, people being exposed to this all the time, and that, and we're, I don't think it's good stewardship of that piece of property when we're going to let leaseholders spray chemicals on it. I mean, I know the specifics on it were anything that's allowed in the state of Connecticut, but what happens if, like this time, it's done inappropriately? It's done the wrong way? And we find out about it afterwards? So that's all I have to say on it.
Thank you, Lee. Any questions?
No.
No. Who's next? Thank you, Lee.
Eric Myers, 22 Barn Door Hills Road. I am one of the property owners that directly abuts the leased farm property on Barn Door Hills Road. I'm here to support a plan that limits the use of town agricultural leases to only crops that do not require the use of chemicals and non-organic fertilizer products such as hay for livestock. Further, I support uses that protect sensitive wetlands and important environmentally sensitive land owned by the town. The lease on Barn Door Hills Road has seen the current lease owner modify the mags of the Salmon Brook without permission, as well as the spraying of numerous chemicals used to maintain tobacco and other crops. These chemicals are sprayed directly on adjacent and adjacent to the brook, and the equipment used to apply the chemicals is driven through the river after spraying. Continued use of chemicals used to treat tobacco will damage this land and harm adjoining property owners. Please consider changes to how we lease our land. And a final positive quick note related to the trunk or treat item that was mentioned by the commission a few moments ago. The Granby grunts attended this event, and it was well represented. And I always take an opportunity to mention the grunts and support the grunts cause, which is to promote STEAM and all forms of education, as well as career paths in STEAM, which is an underserved career path, as well as education opportunity here in Granby. So I ask the commission to always consider supporting the grunts wherever you can and understand that grunts runs on the back of volunteers and private donation. So with that, go grunts.
Wait, Eric, wait, wait, wait. Any questions for Eric?
About the grunts? How'd you do this year? We did well. We made it to state championships. We did not make it to Worlds this year, but we tried really hard. Thank you.
The robot was at trunk or treat, moving the bucket over to you. All right, thank you, Eric. Who's next? It doesn't matter. We'll let you go. Go ahead, it doesn't matter. You guys fight it out. You want to arm wrestle?
We're neighbors. We're abutting neighbors.
I'm Luke Carricetti, and I live at 31 Barn Doors Hills Road, and right across the street from the access to this land that's at the right-of-way. And we have, Abus and I have our dinner out on our back porch. And this summer, it's been a shock to us, the amount of traffic that's been up and down that right-of-way. When they were harvesting the tobacco, there must have been 100 trailer loads, and there was long trailers that the tractors pulled back and forth. And all of this concerns me, not only about the things that people have talked about before, about the herbicide, but the erosion. They have, the farmer has created a ramp to the, it would be the east field, which is higher, directly out from the brook, rather than taking the old, whatever you call that, Ford, I guess. They've created this ramp, which has caused quite a significant amount of erosion, and all the tractor grinding up and down that ramp has stirred up the soil, so it's basically silting the Salmon Brook, which I'm appalled at. And I'm just wondering how you can have a leaseholder on a piece of property that Granby has set aside for future use as recreation land? I mean, it's been kind of mothballed, saying that someday we're going to need this for some town purposes, and let somebody get in there and do things like build this ramp? What's happening with wetlands, you know, surveillance in this whole situation? And why can't we have a leaseholder who is willing to work with the town, willing to come to the town and say, I would like to augment the, my ability to get across the stream with something else, rather than just going ahead and digging a whole trench right across the, and as someone else said, those fields get flooded, and you can imagine what a disturbed area is going to look like after water starts hammering.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions? All right, thank you.
My question really to you is, what is in place with the town to supervise a leaseholder like that?
Yep, I wrote the question down. I got it.
My name's Celeste Johnson, 27 Barn Door Hills Road. And while I do not have an abutting property, I am down in that area almost every day. For the last number of years since I've moved into town, I would go down the farm road with my dogs, and I would hike not only the west portion owned by the town, but take it in through the woods and then go in through the cornfields up by the parking lot that's up across from Harnett Drive. And that was almost a daily routine for me, winter, summer. I have been gone for the last four months, because I had a litter down in Stamford that I had to spend time with. I went out there this morning and was aghast to see the fact that the fields had been flattened. They were flattened. This was a place, when they were growing the corn, where you could see the undulations, you could see the water, you could see the birds that were hanging out there and not worried about you walking through with the dogs, because they knew it was impossible for you to get through there. It was flat. Now, where I live on Barn Door Hills Road, I have a big hill that comes down, and I have a lot of wetlands. And I was informed that I cannot do anything to my wetlands, except dig them out, following all rules and regulations according to dealing with the Wetlands Agent and so forth. Oh, there's no digging out here, folks. They flattened it. They flattened it from one end to the other. So they either dug stuff up that had been settled over time from the prior leaseholder harvesting their corn, or they brought in soil, or they took soil from the perimeter and brought it in. Now, the particular chemical that they are using called Clomazone has an MSD. MSDs, for those who aren't familiar, is a material safety data sheet. In a former life, when I had a factory with plastics, I had to have an MSDS sheet there for OSHA reasons for every single plastic. for OSHA reasons for every single plastic that I brought into the factory. And I will quote from the section under ecological information, ecotoxicity, very toxic to aquatic life with long lasting effects. So you had asked the horse people to come with an ask. I'm going to give you an ask. That particular property, which abuts all of the even numbered Barn Door Hills homes, some of whom were represented here today, we can have a better use for that field. We didn't seem to have a real problem with corn on there, but given its proximity to the Salmon Brook, given the fact that it is the direct recipient of those who come down the farm road, maybe there could be a better use for that. And while you're stuck with a five-year lease, we're stuck with the legacy of the fact that this land now cannot even be certifiable organic, whereas before it could, because you need to have at least three years of toxic free application on the land. So it troubles me greatly now to think that I'm walking through soil that's been turned up with this Clomazone on it with my dogs and I didn't know about it. There were no signs. There was no evidence of this. And I didn't even know about this until I came home last night and one of my neighbors told me. Otherwise, you wouldn't have listened to me tonight. But there are other things in the MSDS that need to be recognized in terms of the lingering effects of the use of Clomazone and its application to the wildlife, the pollinators, and basically the protection of the land that we should all be seeking. Any questions?
No questions.
And I'm not a chemist, I only pretend to be one.
All right, thank you, Celeste. Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Ken Veroni. I live at 62 Barn Door Hills Road. I'm here with my absolutely beautiful wife for 48 years, Kathleen over there. So representing part of the even numbered homeowners on Barn Door Hills. Everybody spoke very well this evening regarding that, so I'm just going to say me too. So I'm part of the me too movement. The only thing I would add is Lee was kind enough to put together a flyer that I'll just submit as part of that, that identifies graphically the parcel along with the homeowners and the proximity with respect to the spray zones and that kind of thing. And my biggest concern, obviously, is sort of over the dam and what's happened this past year, but going forward. So how the town could more effectively monitor the leaseholder regarding the application of herbicides or pesticides or what have you, and how you can make sure that the proper types of chemicals are being applied, if any, and in the right application rates and so forth. So thank you.
And Lee is okay?
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead.
I think this would be very helpful.
Thank you.
No questions?
Nope. Thank you, sir. Make sure we include that in our minutes or... Anybody else in the room? All right, Peggy.
I just want to build a little on what Lee and her daughter Stephanie spoke up about and some others. It's not just the abutters that care, but thank God they were paying attention and they did their homework and they got the facts. There are a lot of users of that property. I have been, and part of it is, you know, obviously town on land, but also the game refuge, et cetera. What I sort of came up to thinking ahead is that right now, as an action item, there should be a requirement that this leasor, let's see, provide email notice or letter notice to the town manager about what is going to be applied and when. There's some bigger issues here about how you deal with all the town leases and what you want to acquire, but it seems that's a bare minimum for any town lease, that people know what's being applied on it. You have a conservation commission, some people who know quite a bit about this, and I know conservation commissions sort of get shuttled to the side a lot in town government, but I think they should be consulted and see what they want to weigh in on. In terms, there are downstream aquifers in Salmon Brook Park and further, and so this might be a particularly sensitive property. I'm not in a position to weigh all that. It does strike me that we want to support farmers and have farm, but as you make that balance between potential contamination of lots of things, food products, if you make a sacrifice to have food products to feed people, it's one thing, but if you're taking risks to provide tobacco, it's not a food product, so maybe you have different criteria. But I think the town, from what I've heard, has been very responsive and responsible in letting people have their say on this, so I hope you can keep that up.
Peggy, any questions for Peggy?
No.
And I didn't identify myself. Peggy LaRoe, up higher on the land, Regal Road.
Thank you, Peggy. Anybody else in the room?
My name is Mike Johnston. I live at 42 Barn Door Hills Road. I want to thank all my neighbors for coming out here and so eloquently kind of stating the problems that we're having with this specific issue. I just have a few questions, and I think everyone's kind of alluded to this earlier, but are there any safeguards or checks and balances in place to identify when these chemicals are being sprayed? And I'm also curious, since this guy, or since this farmer sprayed these chemicals, I guess not in the safest manner, did he break the terms of the lease? And then if so, what are our possible recourse, you know, for addressing that?
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, at this point, we'll go to anybody that's joined us by Zoom. Is there anybody that wants to address us? Who's joined us by Zoom? All right, we'll let Catherine unmute you. Give us your name and address and tell us your thoughts.
Hi, this is Matthew in Laura Nicholas at 58 Barn Door Hills Road. I'm sure you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Just very quickly, I agree with everything that's been said by our neighbors. And just to point out, you know, if there are herbicides being used in a designated wetland, presumably this is, there may be regulations in place, you know, EPA regulations, deep regulations that may have been violated already without really any respect to the terms of the lease or otherwise. So I think that's worth looking into as well. That's really the only thing I wanted to add.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Laura Nicholas. We, I again also support everything that my neighbors have already said. I think the only thing we could add, as well as our perspective as I think the newest folks on the street, we bought our house last year, last summer. It is the old Herndorf property, which does include a 10 acre field on the other side of the west branch of Salmon Brook, right next to Stephanie's field. And, you know, we, I have to say, from a personal perspective, we spent a year hunting for our new home, from Coventry to Southfield. And even though all of our daily routines are in West Hartford, we were so happy to find this property in Granby, which we knew really nothing about, but the more we researched the town, the more charmed we were, and especially by the brook and the meadow. I think seeing the game refuge, the wonderful relationship the town has with horses and agriculture, all added to the appeal. And so, you know, to be honest, I think if we had known activity like this was happening on town land so close to the property, I think we might have reconsidered, or it certainly would have impacted our decision making. And I can only think, despite being new here, from everything I've learned about the town, I do feel this just is slightly tipped over the balance between agricultural support and, you know, healthy ecologies. And I have confidence that the town will resolve this in the best way possible.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom? Anybody else on Zoom?
Carolyn Flint, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Carolyn Flint, 54 Barn Door Hills Road. I just wanted to add that the west branch of Salmon Brook has the federal designation of being wild and scenic. It has a wild and scenic designation. And, you know, it sounds like this kind of chemical can go with the wind and land very close to the brook. And I know Stephanie's property is right at the brook and so is ours. So I think that some parts of the wild and scenic designation might have an effect on, you know, rules and regulations too. That's all.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anybody else on Zoom? At everybody, Catherine?
I believe so.
Okay, we'll come back in the room. Real quick.
Jim Subski, I live at 19 Stonewall Drive. Just listening to this dialogue, I also wanted to add the wild and scenic designation and simply share that with a lot of volunteer work I've done with Holcombe Farm, we established contacts with the folks that lead that program for New England. And so I would imagine if it's any assistance to the town, I'm sure, I have a lifetime of experience in the energy business, so I'm sure that you may be already contacting the EPA, the Department of Agriculture, et cetera, in terms of the proper application. And hosting of MSDS sheets must also be done. But that the National Park Service contact was just tremendous to work with as we were looking at the movement of the west branch of the Salmon Brook and its potential flooding at Holcombe Farm, and also the care and attention that we took, even when we did something simple like demo that old bridge that washed out, as to not go into the riverbed. So just wanted to offer that resource. At a later date, I'd like to come back with my preservation topic, but tonight, that's, this is the full topic.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Any questions?
All right, everybody who wanted to speak, speak. Okay, I will close the public session. Apologize for that. And let's move on and just ignore that. So let me give everybody just a little bit of background. I will try to answer a few questions and then we'll kind of discuss a plan to go from here. And if you know this, I apologize. I just want to tell you how we got here based on my perspective. So this is one of, I think, three pieces of land that the town has owned and utilized for agricultural purposes for some time. They've been leased at different terms off and on for, at least as long as I've been involved, and probably significantly longer than that. A couple of years ago, we set a goal to kind of get those all timed up so that they were expiring at the same time and tried to come up with a standard set of lease terms that would apply to all of them, because believe it or not, before we started, that was not the case. And then we did an RFP. We invited anybody who was interested in farming the land to submit bids, but it was a very tightly RFP. You had to, you could only propose the growing of crops. And so the only two terms you could propose are what you would pay and which crops you would grow. So we weren't comparing the growing of crops to the, you know, husbandry of cattle kind of thing. Okay? So we completed that process roughly about a year ago. Again, a shameless pitch, because when we did that process, we provided a substantial amount of public input and opportunity for the public to input through our communication system. If you are not signed up to get emails from the town, leave here tonight, go to the website and click on subscribe, okay? And follow the instructions. You would have gotten notice that this RFP was out. You would have gotten a place to go to where you could see the link for the proposed leases. So we're trying our best to do that. So then the process that we used is we'd made some improvements to the leases, believe it or not. One was to include some provisions relating to the use of herbicides and fertilizers. They were, the provisions were pretty weak and kind of all over the board. Please do not quote me, it's been a while since I read them, but generally, they say that the lessee can utilize herbicides and fertilizers that conform with all local, state, and federal regulations. So if, in fact, they are not complying with the regulations, and those are more complicated than they sound sometimes, honestly, then there is the potential that the lessor would be in violation of lease. We have not reached that conclusion yet, as far as I know. We also added some provisions that the lessor does have to return the property to the state in which he started with. And I believe, again, don't quote me, that required a soils test at the beginning and a soils test at the end. And we'll have to confirm that. So I do want to thank all of you for being involved. We really do appreciate hearing from you and learning what your concerns are. This is a tough balance, as a lot of you have already recognized, to promote agriculture in a town, but do it in a way that is respectful to the neighbors and our environment. And it's complicated because if any of you who have dealt with the wetlands rules, for example, you know, this following general statement is true, but can be very frustrating. Agriculture is a, preferred goose isn't the right word, but they get to do things you and I don't get to do, agricultural users. The rules are more liberal for agricultural users. So they're not always easy to interpret. However, having said all that, I do appreciate you being involved. I do appreciate, because everything I saw tonight and everything I have heard up to this point, everybody has been very respectful and very willing to look for solutions that work for everybody. I do want to personally thank Mr. Walsh, because he's regularly briefed me on this, okay? So I know he's listening to you and I know he's doing everything that he can to respond. I know, for example, that when there was concern about this spraying, we got deep involved. We referred it to them, asked them to look at it to make sure that they could confirm whether or not the farmer complied with all the technical rules. So what we will do tonight is I will work with Mike to go back and look at the lease, make a closer look at it to make sure that the farmer is following the lease. But I also think that we can sit down with the farmer and see, I can tell you that the lease does not, unless I've forgotten something, it does not require him to give us a detailed plan of what he's planting when each and every year, and what he intends to utilize for fertilizer and herbicide. Doesn't get in that level of detail. So lesson learned going forward when we redo these, right? That doesn't mean we can't sit down and talk to him, because I think the concerns, whether they're required or not, of if nothing else, providing some more input on what he does and the timing of it and providing the notice of it. This particular field is, has the additional challenge that the lease on this particular property actually requires the farmer to maintain public access to it, because we knew it was dual purpose for agricultural and, because we knew people were riding their horses and walking over there. So this one has the potential for some conflicts and issues that may not exist on on some of the other properties. So, Mike, if you're okay with it, I think we'll leave it at that. We'll go back. We'll look more carefully at the lease, make sure that we've satisfied ourselves up to this point, that the farmer is complying with the terms. And I think I'll ask you if he can come, get him in here and talk to us about being more proactive going forward each year before he starts to cultivate the fields on what he's doing and when, and see if he's open-minded to limiting, you know, what he grows there. My recollection of that particular lease was it does allow tobacco specifically and other vegetables and those kind of related things. So, that's, I think, the best way to approach it. Does anybody on the board have anything to add or concerns with what I just laid out? Did I miss anything, Mike?
No.
Okay, that's what we will do. I would tell you to come back and stay in touch, but I know that you will. I know we can trust you guys to continue this dialogue. So, all right, we'll move on. We don't have, do we have any need for an executive session? Mike?
We do not.
Okay. So, I will accept a motion to adjourn this meeting. We do have to reconvene as the sewer, the Water Pollution Control Authority. So, a motion to adjourn, please?
Would we adjourn? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. The Board of Select your meeting is adjourned. In two minutes, we're going to convene the Water Pollution Board meeting. All right. We'll call the meeting of the Granby Water Pollution Control Authority, a special meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from our April 22, the first set of minutes from our...
Public hearing?
Yes.
Do we approve the public hearing minutes of April 22 for the Water Pollution Control Authority?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay. Next item is approval of the special meeting minutes from April 22.
Move that we approve the special meeting minutes of April 22? Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Next item is consideration of a sewer allocation request for 254 and 256 Salmon Brook Street.
Mark, I'm going to recuse myself from this matter to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Understood. Everybody else? There's a memo that is pretty straightforward. There's a calculation. They're asking us to do a sewer allocation for a proposed development that is working its way through our planning department and our planning commission. Everybody have a chance to look at the memo? It's pretty straightforward, pretty consistent with requests we've gotten in the past. If there are no questions or concerns, I would entertain the proposed motion.
I move that, let's see, the Water Pollution Control Authority approve an allocation of 1,955 gallons per day for 256 Salmon Brook Street and 160 gallons per day for 254 Salmon Brook Street.
Fred, you want to make a second? You're my only hope.
I will second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. One abstention?
One abstention.
All right. Anybody opposed? All right. The motion passed, and I believe that's the extent of our work as the Pollution Control Authority. I need a motion to adjourn.
So, move second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody.